Come to order, please. If you will, I'm going to welcome everybody to this regular scheduled board meeting. If you have any telephones, iPhones, any other electronic devices, please silence them at this time. Ms. Sarah, would you lead us in the invocation and pledge?
Do heavenly Father, on this day after Memorial Day, we still want to honor those who courageously gave their lives for the freedom that we so enjoy, for the freedom to be able to meet today as American men and women. We also ask you to hold our present day military personnel that are serving across the world in your loving arms and support them and give them your grace. And we ask that you bless their families as they serve as well as the men and women in the military. And we ask that you fill their homes with your strength and your guidance. We also, dear Lord, come to you and pray for the family of Rusty Floyd. Rusty was a coworker and a dear friend. We pray that you will lift his family up in your loving arms and give them peace. For all these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
I plead the wishes to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to echo concerning Rusty Floyd. For those of you in the audience that are unfamiliar with Rusty, he is our landfill manager who passed away unexpectedly Friday, excuse me, Sunday night. And we're going to miss him. I've known him for years, like the rest of the board. I'm sure they've known him for a lot longer. But again, our condolences go out to the family of Rusty, and we'll move on from there. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under additions and deletions, we would like to add, under county administrator's time, the approval of the extension of the local state of emergency for one additional week. And under deletions, the draft policy for timber hauling and the draft right-of-way policy. That would be items D and E under Public Works. We'll ask to remove those from the agenda and add the local state of emergency approval request.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we got the, need to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. So moved?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Need the approval of the consent agenda. Second. I'm sorry, excuse me. Stand by one. Is there any public comment concerning any agendated item? Seeing none? Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item, as we just added to the agenda, we're requesting that the board approve extending the local state of emergency for an additional seven days. I believe that will give us ample opportunity to pretty well wrap up where we are on some things, but we will address it and assess it again next week. So we request your approval.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request from Renee Yule on behalf of the Argyle Fire District to allow the district to place on the August 26 primary election a referendum to increase their non-addendum special assessment. Ms. Yule had submitted some language, and I believe it has been amended.
Yes, sir. We had to get it under the 75-word limit, but it has now been amended to.
And Ms. Yule is here if you have any questions. But the Argyle Fire District has voted to approve that and asked for this board to request the supervisor election to place it on the August 26 primary ballot.
Motion to approve. Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, staff is requesting that we extend the term of the existing contract with combined insurance services in North Florida for 60 days. They provide our health plan and benefits consulting services. We have developed an RFP that we're putting out for those services, but just to be sure we have coverage until that RFP is back and we make an award, we respectfully request that you approve extending this current contract for an additional 60 days.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our next item, staff is requesting you to give us permission and leave to begin working on some ordinance revisions regarding lots of records and the impact of certain environmental and other restrictions we have placed on those lots. We recognize that they are entitled to invest it for a single-family dwelling in a number of instances. The restrictions that we have in place to protect coastal dune lakes and other such areas severely restricts that. So right now, we deal with it in a very subjective manner. What we'd like to do is develop some objective standards that will allow those restrictions to perform as they're designed, but also allow those with the rights to construct a single-family dwelling the opportunity to do so and to make it much clearer as to what area of those lots they can use in doing that. Certainly make life easier for staff and for those that own those lots to know what will come out of a review of a request to build. So we'll not begin developing that, but if the board would agree, we would bring you back some language in the near future dealing with some of those issues.
I certainly would agree. I would like to see us to try to have them put whatever structure they put on the lot, piece of property, as far back from the lake as possible so that we don't continue to face, you know, flooding issues and that sort of thing. I think that would be paramount as we go forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to, do for a second.
You've got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request from Love's Travel Stops. If you recall, over once we finalized the truck stop deal, Love's began looking at the idea of putting a hotel and restaurant on the parcel directly north of their truck stop. They've been back and forth with two or three iterations of what that would look like. It began with a request for seven acres. They amended that, requesting five acres. But once it got up the ladder considerably and the principals of the company saw the potential of the area, they wanted to go back to a 7.78 acre tract, which will encompass the hotel and the restaurant site and give them three to five acres of future development. They're very excited about what's going on out there and really believe there's more opportunity than what they've captured thus far and want to be a part of that as we move forward. So their request is that we amend the amended request from seven to five back to 7.878 acres.
Subject to compliance with Chapter 125. Thank you.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The next request from admin is to approve some dates for public meetings regarding the parking needs assessment. As you recall, on April 23 of this year, AFCON made their presentation of their parking needs assessment of South Walton. Recognizing the breadth of that study, staff believes it would be prudent to break that study down into three segments for further discussion. Would recommend that at 3:00 PM prior to the next three regular scheduled board meetings in South Walton, that we hold a one-hour session to discuss three different segments. Segment one being from Scenic Golf Drive west to County Road 83. The second one, meeting be for to discuss County Road 83 to County Road 395. And the third, 395 east to 38 US 98. East, west, one of those. Yes, sir. Ever how you get that. I understand. AFCON will have their final draft or final version of their study to the board on June the 4th. That will encompass the comments that were addressed at the April 23 meeting. Our first meeting in June will be June the 10th. There may not be enough time to digest what's in that study, so staff would recommend, if you think it's enough time, that we hold those meetings on June 10th, July 8th, and August 12th. Otherwise, we'd start them in July on the 8th, August 12th, and September the 9th. So.
I'm fine either way. I am thinking that on June the 6th, we have a major hearing that will last all day. And between now and then, we need to be studying those books, so why don't we start in July?
July 8th, 12th, July 8th, August 12th, and September 9th. So that would set meetings at 3:00 PM at the South Walton Annex to discuss those three components.
Yeah, that's fine. I was going to say, we could just do Scenic Golf Drive on the 10th because there really wasn't much.
Well, that's true. There wasn't much of that, but it doesn't matter. I just, I have, we have some folks that are, we have some policies in the parking that we kind of put a hold on, and we got some people kind of waiting to.
It is.
Hello? We have some people waiting to kind of figure out what we're going to do, so.
And you're right, that's a good point. There was very little change on Scenic Golf Drive, so if we start with that one.
Yeah, we could have that one. I mean, we could probably, would that work for y'all? And then we could move on to the next section. Just do Scenic Golf Drive and then do the rest of that.
Okay.
That work?
That's all right. What, y'all, rest of the board feel that okay? All right, so July, excuse me, June 10th, 3:00 PM, we will do the Scenic Golf Drive east to County Road 83. You need a motion on that, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
We'll need a motion. Got a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to go ahead and have motions on the other two as well?
Yes, we need motions on all three dates.
Okay, what's the first meeting in July? When is it?
July 8th.
July 8th.
Motion to hold the next public hearing on CR 83 to CR 395 on July the 8th, 3:00 PM.
Thanks. Yes.
Okay, we didn't vote on the last one, so you want to incorporate them all together? Want to do them all together then?
That would put the third one on August 12th.
August 12th.
That'll all be added in?
3:00 PM, so is that, is motion amended to include all? In second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, and could we have Louis? Louis, could you average, could you go ahead and start advertising that? Because, you know, we want to make sure that people know that it's going to be at 3:00 o'clock and that we will be talking about it, so thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you. The next item, Mr. Chairman, is a request from the sheriff's office in conjunction with admin in our budget office. The sheriff has began housing federal inmates. He's anticipating revenue of about $20,000 a month. He anticipates utilizing those funds for maintenance and operations to facilitate the housing of those. He is working also to bring in some additional state and federal inmates that would bump that $20,000 up monthly fairly significantly. The request is that, as those funds are delivered to the county, that they be put into a line item on the budget that will allow the sheriff to draw from for maintenance and operational needs associated. The maintenance portion primarily with needs that are at the jail now, some improvements that need to be made. And then the operations side, where he may need to bump up some operations to facilitate housing these inmates. So this action would give him access to those funds as needed. Certainly, we would monitor it, and if it got to the point where we felt that there were excess funds, we would come back and address that with the board at a later date. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Will these inmates be in the first pod?
Right now, they're in the existing pods, so they're in with the general population. As that number grows, he would anticipate making sure the additional pod, the new pod is ready to receive those, and that's what some of these funds will go to.
Will these funds here go to bring that? I know in the past, we've sort of robbed some of the parts, bringing this, that pod back up to standard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next item is a companion to the one you just approved, where we're asking to establish a line item in the final forfeiture budget in the amount of $120,000 to receive those funds and to create that line item for the sheriff to draw from for those expenditures that we just discussed.
That's the 20,000 you're talking about per month?
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Commissioners, next item is regarding the Woodlawn Fire Station, United Fire Station. I want to commend Stan for the work he did to get us where we were. It was kind of, it was pretty tough, but if you recall, the DOT gave us an appraisal of $240,000 for that property. And pretty well said, we'll give you the 240 and go spend whatever you want to spend, and we'll, we may give you some more of it back. Stan worked very hard to get that number up to 500,000, so that's their offer. And I will ask Stan to tell you what action we need to take today, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Chairman, what we have is three, three items, all three in regards to the United Fire Station. The first one is the actual purchase agreement between Walton County and DOT for the amount of 500,000. And the way we arrived at that number was the 240 for the appraisal and then administrative increase of an additional 260. So we would ask for your approval on the purchase agreement of 500,000.
All right, Stan, that's 500 for the property. Isn't there an additional 50,000 they're willing to give for relocation of utilities?
There is, Mr. Chairman, an additional pot of money of approximately 50,000 for relocation of utilities and things of that nature. But that'll be a different pot of money. And we also have Mr. David Bell here representing DOT, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second item is the actual resolution discotifying the purchase agreement in the amount of 500,000.
To approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Excuse me. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And then the last item is the actual lease agreement for a parcel of property to relocate there, which is about two, two and a half to three miles south of the current location. And this will be a lease agreement between DOT and Walton County to relocate the fire station.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote we send Stan to negotiate all of our future purchases.
He did a great job, has a few frustrating moments.
We want to thank Mr. Bell, too, for helping out on that, too. Thank you.
And to that end, Commissioners, we're going to begin moving this process forward. We have until December 1st to, is that right, to vacate that property? So with your blessing, we're going to begin developing what we need to do to get that done. Any action we take, we will certainly bring to you, but we would like permission to begin the process, and we're thinking that we're going to look at, and Stan corrected me, from erect a steel-framed building, and so we may need to move forward ordering that structure. We certainly know how much money we've got to deal with. We don't think we're going to spend all of that initially, but we would like permission to begin the process, and ordering the building be what we need to do and begin the, so we would like to move forward with that, and we'll bring you back the particulars.
Are you asking for a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Who's going to clear the land?
Stan.
Oh, good.
Did a great job. Actually, the contractor for 331 is going to use the remaining parcel for a lay-down yard for the construction. We've talked to them and believe they're going to clear it, and they're moving forward, clearing their part as well.
And not charge us?
Well, Stan's negotiating that.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, that check, I believe, be available within 30 days. David, is that correct?
Okay, thank you. All right, let's see what we got.
Public Works.
Public Works. Wilmer?
I got them.
You got them?
Yes, sir. Unless there's something hard and they'll answer that. We're asking to approve a change order for Dalton Brothers Construction on the Oyster Lake Bridge project of one day for weather due to the March 28 rain event.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Also, on the Oyster Lake Bridge, we're requesting to approve a change order for $4,150 due to some material that needed to be brought in that perhaps wasn't expected the right quantities early on, but staff has reviewed this and believe it's an appropriate change order. We request your permission, your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I just have one question. When are we going to start addressing the late days?
We've already sent them a notification that we're assessing liquidated damages, so we're addressing it.
I think it's going to be finished, open next, this week, maybe?
Cliff, you got a date? Traffic will be on the bridge. The end of this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pray for a drought for five days.
And speaking of bridges, want to give kudos to Public Works for their hard work on Draper Lake and getting it back up and running. So thanks, guys. Next item, Mr. Chairman, we're asking to approve extending a contract with Ecological Associates for professional services. These are the folks that are working with our environmental group to establish the, what's the word I'm thinking of?
HCP.
Habitat Conservation Plan, HCP.
HCP, yeah.
And this is paid for by grants, so it's no funds out of our pockets, so we would request your approval.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bagby?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First item we have on the agenda is request approval of your nominees for the North Walton Marketing Event Committee. We have nine names. I believe you have a copy of all nine, include one from each of you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second item we have is, we've been talking about this since I've been at the TDC, I think, probably even with Stan, we knew, we know that the half-cent for Southwest or for emerging markets is sunsetting, and there's been an increased demand on the TDC, whether it's building a bike path on the north side of 38 by Western Lake, or a bridge, or maintaining the bike path for the entire length of the sector. And so there's this increasing demand on the resources of the TDC. And so one of the questions or one of the proposals that came up was letting the emerging market half-cent sunset and looking at establishing a half-cent that does nothing but address those issues, those capital construction and maintenance issues within the destination going forward. So we're seeking direction on the wording. If we have a non-binding referendum, it'd be, the proposal would be, it would be on the primary ballot in August, so we have to have it 60, at least 60 days out. So we're seeking a direction from the Board of County Commissioners on this issue.
Well, I have some questions. I'll start this off. First of all, do we have any idea of how much money will be collected? I don't, I haven't seen a list of projects. At first, I saw it's for emerging markets, and now it's for infrastructure. So I'd like a list of projects that you think this money would help cover, and how much will they cost? So are we going to put a definite sunset if this goes through, or is it just going to go on infinitum? How long will it, if you say it's going to cost $3 million for these projects, for example, how long is it going to cost to raise it? Is it going to be limited to just a certain number of projects, or is it just going to be used at discretion? I just think we have a lot of questions that need to be answered or asked and answered before we move forward with a referendum. Because if, you know, we get the answer to these questions and we decide to do this, it could be put on the November ballot, you know? But I have more questions than I have answers at this point.
I don't think it hurts to put it out to vote to the people. I mean, I think that's, I think one of the things, if you'll remember, is that the improvements that the Attorney General said that they could spend money on were, you know, bike path maintenance, repair, and building new bike paths because of the nexus to tourism. Parking, they can build, they can buy, build, and maintain parking. They can build bridges, pedestrian bridges, and they can maintain, you know, the facilities that the tourists are using. So that would be maintenance of the bike pass. I think, and possibly signage, but I think beyond that, I think those are really the three main areas that the AG gave their opinion on, and that's really what we've kind of looked at from the get-go. their opinion on, and that's really what we've kind of looked at from the get-go. So, I think that, I don't, I don't know whether it really matters whether we have it on the primary or the general or what, but I think that it doesn't hurt to put a vote to the people, to say, you know, this is sunsetting. Would you like to have another half cent tax? And would you like that to go to improvements? Which I think everybody agrees that, that since the TDC has picked up some of those costs, it's taken the burden off, off the county because we, we would be doing that. And the, so, anyway, that's, so, I'm not quite sure, the language, I think, is the main thing, is, is could you get the language and could you put in the language exactly what it would be used for? And then whether it's on the primary or the general, you know, does, does that, does that make a difference, Mr. Bagby?
The only reason we recommended it to be on the primary commissioner is that from an accounting perspective for the bed tax collectors who are currently remitting four and a half cents, if we were to wait till the general election, that would mean in October and probably November and December, they would go back to four cents. And then January first, they'd go back to four and a half cents and it just creates an, an accounting nightmare for them. So, their, their feedback is, if it's gonna, if you're gonna do it, just do it seamlessly.
Let me ask you this too, Jim. Non-binding, so what would that mean? What would the non-binding?
Well, basically, you, you are asking the governed for their advice on what, and there's several surveys out there. We did one as part of our strategic planning process where we made it available. We put this question before everybody. We sent it out to the Taxpayer Association, the Chamber of Commerce, everybody that we could. Sixty-one percent of the people that responded, and there were over twelve hundred people that responded, said they supported the half cent, the continuation of the half cent for designated capital construction and maintenance projects. I think the Taxpayer Association had it in their survey and I think, I think Dr. Riley told me something like seventy percent opposed it. So, it's, it's really, there, there's conflicting feedback from the electorate out there and I think this would be the one that would count. And I think the point's been made, usually turn out slow in an off-year election, but that's, that's not the county's fault. I mean, that's just what it is.
Right. When is, when is the primary?
August twentieth, sixth, August twenty-sixth. Jim, I got a couple of questions or comments too. In reading the proposed resolution, about the fourth paragraph down, it says, and I don't know if it's a typo or if it was supposed to be in there, the situation does not provide sufficient operating revenues to maintain and improve our high-quality school system.
Obviously, that's a typo.
Obviously, it is.
I haven't seen that version, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, I was out last week.
It's in our books. Now, the other thing-
Pick some of it, Mr. Chairman. Don't get me wrong.
I'm sure. The other thing is, I have a concern about a non-binding resolution or vote. These are people's tax monies that they're willing to pay or may want to pay. And we've got into this non-binding stuff years ago and the people voted against it, yet it was passed anyway. Now, I, I was ill about it when it happened. It's the garbage tax, but it's the best thing since sliced bread now. However, I just think that as a person, the, the public has a right to make that decision whether they want to have that tax imposed upon them. And I would strongly urge that we look at it as a binding referendum. And I do believe it needs to be stated so into language that will be on the ballot because the resolution as proposed right now would not be part of the ballot language. So, I think that needs to be looked at too, at least that's my opinion. And we can still move forward on June tenth board meeting and still meet the deadline for Bobby's requirement. But those are my comments concerning this proposal.
If, if I could answer, I never answered Commissioner Commander's questions, then I'll answer your, your question too. The half cent commissioner generates, this year will generate somewhere in the neighborhood of two million dollars. You will see when we bring our budget forward that we have numerous, what we've identified as unfunded requirements. Most of them are beach access improvements so that we get the little sand paths which, which are nice but erode the dunes with a actual walkover. There are some other improvements. There are some entryway improvements into the destination, coming across the bridge and coming across in from Bay County and from Okaloosa County that we would foresee. But there, there are lists and you're right. I think that's one of the things that everybody agrees on is don't do it unless you can show us what you're going to use it for. The Valley Crest contract is an ongoing contract and it will, you know, over the years, it will probably grow above three hundred thousand, probably to three hundred and fifty thousand in the out years, maybe even more depending on the improvements we put into the destination. So, that's a cost. The bike path maintenance outside of Valley Crest's contract, we, we don't know what that cost is, but we assume that there is a cost going forward. Sinage, the Coastal Dune Lake signage, one of the things we'll give you during the update is we have the sign down at Western Lake now. It's a very beautiful sign. Kudos to our maintenance, the beach maintenance guys and to Brian for the work that they did working with Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board to get that signed. So, there, we agree we need to identify and we are in the process of identifying those costs. With respect to, I think the next question was binding or non-binding, that, that's y'all's decision. We support whatever decision you make. There's a couple of pieces of misinformation or misunderstanding in the community. Number one, the vote is not of the people that are paying the tax, but if anything, the people who are collecting the tax and people who are working at those places. Also, it would only be by the electorate in the special taxing district. So, the people in Freeport or Dufuniac Springs, this would not be on their ballot. They wouldn't see it. It would only be on those people south of the intercoastal waterway that would actually have the opportunity to vote on, on this. And so, you'd be getting their feedback. Most of the folks, anecdotally, besides our strategic planning survey, most of the folks south of the intercoastal seem to favor it, not all, because they understand that the money that will spent, be spent on the bike path is money that you won't have to raise in adverum taxes to maintain the bike path. Because the bike path has to be maintained, whether the TDC does it or whether the admin side does it, the, the bike path and those, those other things, bathrooms, beach accesses have to be maintained. So, it's just a question of who's doing it and where's the resources for that coming from? So.
I still would like some estimate of how much is this going to cost on a yearly basis? Is it going to be ongoing infinitum? Are you just another half cent and, and it never sunsets? You know, at least, you know, Sun, Southwest airline sunsets in September. So, I'd, I'd like, for me, I'd like, and I know you narrowed them down to three, but is that what you're going to primarily focus this money on? How much do you think it's going to cost to do all of this? And is it, is it going to be ongoing? And I'd love to know, how much money does the TDC have in reserves that could be used for this kind of thing as well?
Well, most of our reserves will be spent on the Hurricane Storm Damage Reduction Project. And I'll, I'll talk about that. Y'all know that that got authorized last week, but in the updates, I'll, I'll cover that. And we owe you, we are working on our reserve plan. The only thing that I would add to Commissioner Meadows' list is beach accesses. I would see that this money could be used to purchase beach accesses. And I know that there are a couple of parcels or whatever that have been floated that might be suitable for the county to purchase to provide additional beach accesses. I think this would give us a, a pot where we could, besides doing parking improvements, could buy land parcels to provide additional beach accesses within the south end of the county.
And, and I'm not certainly saying that I'm opposed for a referendum. I, I like asking the, the voters what they want. So, I would, I'm in agreement of that. I just think we need to know how the money's going to be spent, how much it's going to cost. I mean, in, in my budget, if I'm fixing to buy a new air conditioner, I need to know how much that thing's going to cost so that I can budget and, and make sure I have enough. And I think the people that are going to be voting on this deserve those questions before they walk into, into the polling place. You know, they need answers to those questions.
You're talking about the-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You're talking about the surveys that were done. I'm, I'm surprised if you've done surveys and this is an agenda item today that, I haven't received any phone calls or emails or any information of anybody supporting or in opposition to this. I'm surprised that the bed tax collectors are not, you know, sending emails to us or calling us in support of this or, I mean, I'm just surprised. How, how much knowledge is that? How many people know what's going on?
Yeah.
Well, the TV's, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't know. I mean, I'm just wondering.
Okay. Commissioner M. Phil?
Mr. Bagby, quick question. You mentioned you're going to have your budget submitted soon and you have a number of unfunded projects. Will there be an identification in there as to this could have been, this unfunded project possibly could be funded if this additional penny, half penny was passed?
Almost all the unfunded projects that we're going to propose, all the capital projects could be funded by this. So, those are the additional beach accesses that we're talking about improving. So, yes, sir.
When, when will we see this?
I'm hoping, I was out last week, but I'm hoping to have the budget submitted this week to admin for review.
One, one of the things too is, you know, when you say how much is this going to cost? What normally happens, if you've got, if you've got a half cent and it raises two million dollars then, that year, then what you do is, you know, you, you don't go over that two million. I mean, you know, you allocate what you're going to spend it for. So, and because it's, the penny's allocated for certain things, you can't go into marketing and spend that money for improvements. And you can't go into, you know, other, you have to keep those all separate. So, when you talk about, when you talk about, you know, how much is all this going to cost, it's, it's, it's probably just like the Southwest thing that, that was voted on by the previous commission. You know, they wanted a certain amount of money to advertise their, you know, airline and we, you know, and the commission voted on it. And so, I think that, that now that we have the TDC AG opinion agreeing to do some of these much-needed improvements that are just much-needed, if the, if the TDC bed tax doesn't pay for them, then the county commission is going to be presented with a huge bill. And, and that's what's going to happen because things down there are getting such that the maintenance and the parking needs and the, I mean, it, it is at the tipping point. So, you know, I would suggest that we at least ask the, you know, the people what they want to do and give, give them a list and maybe rewrite this, 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 the referendum language to decide that. Because when you look at the budget as we have, pretty much, it's like the county budget, everything's pretty much allocated. I mean, you know, there, there's not a whole lot of, there's, there's not a whole lot of give there. So, that, that would just be my comment about what's going on down there.
All right. Ms. McQuiston, did you want to speak? Come forward, please.
It's your time to come in right now.
We'll take it right now. Come on. Please identify your name for the record.
Yes. Thank you. Bonnie McQuiston. Yes, this is a perfect example of why people don't trust their government. I was president of the Taxpayers Association when this one-half cent proposal for Southwest was voted on. I recall, it was a very, very controversial tax at the time. It was so controversial, in fact, that I recall talking to Sonny Mayors for hours and so much so that he held a special workshop at the TDC with the Advisory Council for the Taxpayers Association. The result of that was several things that were agreed upon, the most important of which was the sunset clause. The sunset clause was the most important. If you all recall, and Bill, you were there, Mr., sorry, Commissioner M. Phil, you were there in a different capacity, Mr. Jones in different capacity, and I think Commissioner Commander, Commissioner Bridgen. That meeting in the south end, standing room only, all the way out to the door, it was, a lot of people spoke against that tax that night, but the, the convincing factor was the sunset, the sunset clause of that tax. Now, we're here. Now, we hear a very deceptive scheme to continue that tax, continue the tax. I don't recall the public voting on that tax at that time. I don't recall the public voting on any bed tax. Now, I don't quite understand why the public's going to vote on this bed tax and I'm not sure that that, I, I don't know where this is coming from. If this is the first public act from this new Advisory Council, I don't think we're in for a very good time here. I don't understand how, why the public is voting on a bed tax. Why did I not hear, you know, Chris Titus or Sonny Mayors or Dawn come before you with requests for the public to vote on a bed tax? If we're going to restructure, if the TDC wants to restructure so that the public now runs the TDC and we vote on increases for bed taxes, fine, let's make that a referendum. Let's let the public run the TDC. Otherwise, let's let the TDC director come to you. If they need an increase, they can't manage their eighteen million dollars in bed tax or their BP windfall or whatever to get a couple of million dollars that they need for this fund, then let's let them come to you and tell you why they need an increase, just like the other TDC directors have done, and you, and ask you for an up or down vote. What is this referendum? Why is the public voting on a, a bed tax increase? I don't understand that. But I hope that you will say, you're going to keep your commitments and you, you made a commitment, this, the BCC made a commitment. So did the TDC. They made a commitment to the people that this one-half cent would sunset. And it is, you need to keep that commitment. It, it was the only reason it passed that night and I really hope that you will keep that commitment to the people. Thank you very much.
Mr. Riley?
Dr. Riley? Hey, you works for me. The survey, I'm Don Riley, speaking first on behalf of the Taxpayers Association and later on behalf of myself. We, in fact, did do a survey and we had two thousand one hundred twenty-three responded, which was nearly fifty-five percent of those receiving the survey. About thirty-eight hundred people received it. We had one thousand four hundred eighty-six who voted against this extension of this tax. We had six hundred thirty-seven who voted for it. Seventy percent of those responded to our poll and it was clear-cut. The question was yes or no. And seventy percent voted emphatically no. I would commend Bonnie's remarks to you with regard to this commission following through on the promise of the prior commission at that time when this tax was instituted. I would further submit to you that the position of the Walton County taxpayers is emphatically no. We oppose a new one-half cent tax. You can call it new, you can call it an extension, take your choice of semantics. The way it is perceived by everyone is that this half-cent tax, no matter how you term it for its purpose, is still a one-half cent tax that this commission in the past pledged would go away. Mr. Chapman made some valid points, I think, with regard to the non-binding referendum that was ignored before. To have a non-binding referendum, to me and to the majority of our board for sure, the overwhelming majority of our board, doesn't comport with what we think is open, transparent and most particularly accountable government. If there is to be a referendum, then in fact, it ought to be binding. I would submit that it is not the job of the public, which public is going to be, as you well know. you well know. In general, poorly informed on this. They don't know the ramifications of it, just the way it is. Having this at its primary, the last two mid-presidential term primaries have seen a little over 25%, a little over 26% voter turnout. If you did put this on a presidential ballot, then you'd be seeing about three times, two and a half to three times the turnout. That's a presidential ballot, not a midterm ballot, whether it's primary or other. For this board to use any vote as either A, a fig leaf for justification of extending this tax is, we think, not good accountable government. If y'all are going to have this imposed on the public, it needs to be your idea, not one out of eight voters saying, yeah, I think that's okay. You're the people with the most information. You're the people who ran for this office to make hard decisions, and I understand this is a hard one, especially in an election year. As to a binding referendum, that's y'all's call. I really think that this is something that ought to be decided in this room, but I'll leave that choice to you. Having said all this, I'm, in effect, at risk of being perceived as disagreeing with two people with whom I usually agree and two people whom I respect, most particularly the man bearing the message, Mr. Bagby. The Walton County Taxpayers Association and its board emphatically believe that y'all made a good choice, and Mr. Bagby, that he's done, on balance, a good job. That's not to say that we agree with every decision that he's made, every action that he's taken, or will decide or will make. Nonetheless, based on the body of the work, we think he's doing a good job. We also understand that in this particular case, Jim is the messenger. He is bearing the message that he was given by his advisory council. He answers both to that council and to you. He has a responsibility to, in effect, answer to two masters, which is a pretty darn difficult task. Nonetheless, he is charged with coming to you with the desires and the votes of his council. We differ with his council on this. We don't think that this is a good idea, and we would urge that you not at any time authorize this. It is possible, now speaking for myself, that this could be done, the funds could be provided in different fashions. One would be reallocation of existing funds. Two would be, how is it that other jurisdictions around the United States have hamburger taxes? Why is it that bed taxes, the bed tax collectors, the owners of those condominiums, and bear in mind, I don't have a rental condominium, I don't have a dog in this hunt personally, why is it that only the bed tax collectors are saddled with this? Why are monies taken out of the owners of those condominiums' pockets and not out of the owners of the restaurants here? They certainly contribute to
Dr. Riley.
Come here.
Dr. Riley.
38 and so on.
Dr. Riley.
Yes. You. Okay. In sum, I've used my time. Thank you for your time and attention. We would urge that you vote against this.
Question.
I just, I have a quick question. Okay, when you said you, you adamantly suggest that we do not do this by this, what, you may not put it on a referendum?
A, I personally do not believe a non-binding referendum is worth the paper it's written on. B, I think that is a prerogative of this board, not of a public that is going to be, in general, not terribly well-informed. I think that that is your choi- choice, not that of the public.
Mr. Chairman, I, I haven't seen the list yet, and I know Mr. Bagby has said he's going to get a list to us, but I've got a question for, for Mr. Davis. And I seem to recall that under state statute, now, if you want to get a tax that's going to sometime down the road be used as collateral for, for bonding or debt service, it requires a referendum. That if you don't have a referendum in the pike that the voters have approved, then if you do get a tax, then you can't use it to, let's say, let's say he's got a $5 million project, it's going to take two years' worth of collections to, to cover, that, that they couldn't use that to, to fund debt?
If, if the tax is specifically tied to a specific issuance of a bond, and there are lots of variations of that possibility, then yes, I believe you have to have a bonding resolution.
And that would be my concern, is that at some point in time, if this passes, that at some point in time, there is a big project that were to be done by this, if, if the board agrees, that you couldn't, if you didn't do a referendum, then you couldn't use that half penny to, to pledge against a bond or a bank borrowing.
As I mentioned earlier, it has manifested that the information level possessed it. This electorate here, by you, is vastly superior to that possessed by the electorate. It is, it has been, and it will be. This judgment is yours. We oppose this. And by the way, am I mentioning the hamburger tax is not an advocacy for such a tax? I'm simply pointing out that there is, in my view, a distinct inequity in how these funds are collected.
Dr. Riley, I understand what you're saying. This original referendum back years ago, five years ago, was done by the board. It wasn't a vote of the public.
Correct.
Okay? So, I'm just thinking out loud, is why would we go through the process of going through a referendum and a non-binding or binding referendum whenever this board can do it on its own, based upon public hearings or whatever the case, we have to do before taking any action? Is that, you're, am I understanding what you're saying on that?
I absolutely agree.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have another, just one more comment on that. I think the reason for the referendum was because I think it's a new day, it's a new time, it's a new board, it's a new advisory board, and I think everybody kind of got together and said on the advisory board, you know, this would be, this would be a good thing to, well, let's ask the people what they think. We're no longer wanting to just dictate. We want to ask the people what they think. And I want y'all to think ahead and in another way. We have a hurricane, we have another oil spill, we have another hurricane. People go away, the taxes go away, all that revenue goes away. We still have to do certain things as far as a county to maintain, shore up, do all kinds of things. There is a balance between having to raise ad valorem taxes on everybody and, and having a bed tax that, that is one of the, I think, one of the lowest in the state, probably the, the country, I don't know, when you, you know. Anyway, that's what I'm thinking about, is I'm thinking ahead of not just how much do they have in the bank now, I'm thinking ahead, what if, as we know, could very well happen, everything goes south? We still, as a board, still have that responsibility. And the TDC doesn't have the money, and we don't have the money. Are we going to be faced with a decision that says, folks, we don't have enough money to operate, we're going to have to raise ad valorem taxes? And then, you're going to really be, you're going to see the people. So, that's just another side of the, of the picture.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Riley.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I think that's why it's important that we study all the, I'm, I'm listening and, and understanding everything you're saying. I also would like to know, and, and just refresh my memory, you know, the BP money that came in. What are we going, what are the plans to use that money for? No, the TDC BP money? Yeah, I mean, do you have in your budget, are you going to show us what you're going to use that for?
Part of it's going to go to the beach hurricane storm damage reduction. Yes, I might.
Okay. So, they're getting, to me, a budget is paramount.
Yeah. The beach nourishment program is a unbelievable sucking sound on, on, on the, on the revenues. I mean, it is a, just a huge, yeah. So, you know, but I would say, get with Jim and look over the budget and talk about all this stuff, because there are some different, different thoughts.
Ms. Nielsen. State your name for the record.
My name is Mary Nielsen, and I concur with both Dr. Riley and Ms. McQuiston. The one thing is, when you're discussing a referendum, you're asking the local people, some of whom, as Sarah is one of them, some of whom are, have actually been bed taxpayers because they have chosen to rent local properties. Others are actual owners who actually collect and pay the bed tax, but guess what? They are not the person paying it. It is the person who is the tourist who is actually paying it, and we're not asking them. We are making a decision on their behalf for them to pay this additional tax. I would like to see, and I have not heard any discussion of it so far, or I don't know your level of comfort with the understanding of all the, the other $18 million or the $16 million that's coming in. I would like to see a breakdown of that 16 or 18 million written down, columnated, so that we know what it can be used for, are there any overlaps, unrestricted reserves? We have to save for a rainy day. So what Cindy just said is, yes, we have to save for a rainy day for the hurricane. We'd be foolish if we didn't. So I'd like to see the breakdown of where we can move money from our existing bed tax collections, the existing cents, and has anyone ever investigated how we can change or alter one of those full cents, a half cent? Can they be undone? Can they be unvoted? Can they be rearranged as to their use and allocation? And I think until we have that, we don't really have all the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris. Could you also state your name for your record?
Suzanne Harrison. I'm president of Edgewater Beach Condominiums, and I am a bed tax collector. What you don't understand is, maybe, that if a hurricane hits, the bed tax that you're counting on $2 million goes down. People don't come when that happens. The way y'all get the money to do the things you want to do is by all of this new building that you're doing down here. Every time I turn around, we're doing more and more building permits, which is great. People want to come here, they want to pay the property tax. You're getting more and more property tax in the left hand, and then you want to take from the pot of gold and rob the tourists in the right hand. The bed tax collectors, there was an email last night sent to me from somebody on the TDC council. I was in Birmingham. I got up and came back because of that email, saying that they had been contacted, and most of the bed tax collectors are very opposed to this. A lot of people didn't know this meeting was today. I think y'all are way ahead of the ballgame, way ahead of the ballgame. I think y'all need to sit back, you need to let this tax expire, you need to have some public hearings on this tax. You don't assign it to go off and be voted on by the public south of the bay, who most people don't even live here, so you can get it done. If y'all want to call for a vote, then you call for a vote and say, this commissioner supports this tax, and we're going to send it out to the people. But if you hadn't got the guts to sit up here and call for a vote that all of you support it, and call it up or down, either you support it or you don't, one of the two, but you cannot hide up here and let the public do what y'all's job to do. You need to talk to the bed tax collectors, you need to talk to everybody and see what it involves. When this tax passed, Sarah, you promised it would not be extended in any way, just exactly like y'all did the bridge tax. So the people north of the bay better sit back and take notice of this, because when that bridge tax expires, then this is just a sign, y'all are going to figure out a way to have another tax, to keep the tax, because you're going to need it for something else. Tax and spend has not helped this country at all, not at all. Any of y'all that believe this country's better off with all the taxing and the spending that we've done, it is not. People are out of jobs. There are businesses down here that would be happy, not to pay the tax, but they'd be real happy if we were doing more advertising for what I always talk about. If your winters down here were packed, if the fall season was packed and the spring season was packed, you, we, the TDC would have all the money it needed. We need to spend our money getting people here in the shoulder season and stop thinking that we can live on the pot of gold the TDC has just from the summer money.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bagby?
Just to try to answer as many of the questions as I can. On the bed tax collectors, Mr. Bridgen, you asked about that. What we're hearing from the bed tax collectors is a frustration that the money that they are collecting, some of whom they think it's actually their tax money, but the money that they are collecting are being used for destination improvements and for bike path payments or for coastal Dune Lake signage or for some of the other things that, by the AG's opinion, is fully authorized to be used. So they're very frustrated that that is being used. In the discussion at the advisory council, the issue was if we basically fence off some money, some amount, whatever that amount is, and say, that's for destination improvements, if it's for bike path maintenance, if it's for signage, if it's for bridges, if it's for parking, if it's for additional beach accesses, then that, that's what, it's kind of like the hurricane storm damage, the beach nourishment penny. I, I think that was their philosophy. So, there is some frustration on the bed tax collectors' part there. There's also frustration on the Taxpayers Association side of, and I want to be clear, the emerging market half cent is sunsetting. I think the direction of this board has been extremely clear that that's sunsetting, and I think part of the rationale for the referendum was, we sunsetted this, it's, we're not extending. We're going, we're going to, whether it's a binding referendum or whatever mechanism. On the binding referendum, I, I believe you're correct, Commissioner, and if we're going to go buy beach property, it's probably going to be more than $2 million that this would generate in any one year. So if you're going to go buy additional beach accesses, you're probably going to have to have some subset of money there that's generated somehow. So, that, that's the, on the bed tax collectors, you will, you will hear different things depending on what, what their issue is, whether you're asking about how the money should be spent or how much should be collected. They'll all tell you that we have one of the lowest bed tax rates in the state, we have the lowest of any of the top 10 destinations in the state, and we're the 10th largest or 10th most productive destination in the state. On the allocation of the $18 million, I'll be glad to sit down with anybody and go through the budget and show how the cents generate, you know, what each cent, the two cents generates about, I want to say, $7 million, $8 million, and then, you know, what those can be used for. I've done that to several or with several groups, and I'll be glad to do that with anybody. On the, you know, we're, we're looking for direction, but there, there is, I agree with the direction y'all have provided, that you want more of a destination management organization. Do the improvements, maintain the improvements, maintain the beaches to high quality, and it's not just for the tourists, it's for everybody. But that requires resources sometimes, and so that's what we're asking for, is your, your direction on how, how to go forward on this.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Harris is totally correct. I know that I gave my word, and I think Mr. Bridgen gave his word, that this, this tax would sunset. And yes, it sunsets in September, but if we vote to put another one in in October, you know, you can call it what you want to, but we will be extending that tax. I, I am, I just think we need to let this one sunset, we need to take some time. I understand what Commissioner Meadows is saying, thoroughly understand what she's saying, and, and she has some valid points. But I think we need to take more time to, to hear from the public, to hear from the bed tax people. We need to, as Mayor Nielsen said, I want a, an Excel spreadsheet of how much money's coming in, what it's being spent for, what the projections are. I need more information before I can even consider voting, putting it in a referendum or voting as the FIBA bus to, to start another tax. Let's let, for, for my, let's let this one sunset. This doesn't happen to be done right away. I understand you're saying it's a bookkeeping. Well, you know what? All these bed tax people have bookkeepers, that's what they're paying for. So if you sunset a half a cent, and a year later you put in a new one or whatever, you know, that, that's what they pay their, their bookkeepers for. So, that's my stance, although if we want to put this off, you said we still have till the 10th. Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am, it has to be.
But I think today's just
If you have a resolution.
Yeah.
If you have a resolution.
Yeah.
Fire actually.
Um...
Supervisory election.
Do I need to put that in form of a motion? Or, I mean, I don't know. Can we just say, let's, will that, let's hold off on this for a while?
You can do it either way.
Hold off for a little while? What are we talking about, a little while?
Well, first of all, I think we need to let that tax, I'm sorry, sunset. We need to let the half cent that we promised, and I only, I realize there are only two of us on here on the board, but we gave our word that that would sunset. I think it needs to sunset, and then let's take some time, and if it's up to a year to, so to hold public hearings, we have enough money coming in, I would think, from TDC revenues, from the BP money, whatever, to start some of these projects now, to start them. I want to see, I want to see details. I want to see details and how, because, you know, it is somebody's money that we're spending, and it may not... Not Bonnie, but Mayor Nielsen was right. I rent a beach house almost every year in South Walton to keep my lovely grandchildren out of, from destroying my house. So I am one of those people that pay bed tax. I just think we need to hold off.
Okay. Kenneth?
I'll...
You got anything?
Well, I concur with Commissioner Commander. When, when you take a half a cent and you sunset it and you put it in a referendum that passes, when you just transfer that half a cent, you still got it on there, it's still on the bed tax. So I'm like, Commissioner Commander, we need to really look at this, and we need to let this sunset before we even consider moving forward with it.
All right.
I think, you know, need to determine if that's what the board...
Is that a motion?
I'll, I'll make it in form of a motion, yes, sir.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion was to just let this thing sunset, and we'll address it at a future date. Is that paraphrasing right?
Pretty much, yes.
I think it's going to sunset. I don't think you have to vote for it to sunset. It's, it's going to sunset. I mean, it's going to sunset.
Yep. Moving that to a special date.
I think, yeah, the mo, the, yeah, it, it's going to sunset.
Yeah.
I, I mean, naturally. But we're not asking for it to be re-upped.
Right. We understand, right. We're not, we know it's going to sunset.
I think the motion needs to be reworded.
All right.
Mr. Attorney, you want to reword it for me?
I think, excuse me, don't let me put words in your mouth, but I think the idea of the motion was that we would take no action on any further referendum or any new tax until after the sunsetting of the current tax. Is that right?
That's what I meant to say.
I think that's what you, what you intended.
All right. Okay, you had a motion and a second?
Not mine so well.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
On our updates, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the last week, Congress, both the House and the Senate authorized the hurricane storm damage reduction project. We're waiting on the President's signature. The non-federal portion of the project is slated to come in at 42 million, so if you want to know where the 36 million that we have in the various pennies of reserves are going, more than half of it is going to that. In fact, a, most of it is going to go to that.
What's the process from here forward?
The process, well, after the President signs, then we have to get allocation. So you, you get an authorization, then you get an appropriation, actually, is what we will get, and we hope to get that from Congress. We'd like to get it this year, but it is an election year for them, and so we'll probably take off as much time as they can, and we're looking at next spring to get it authorized for next fall, not this coming fall. And then we also have to hope we can get some state money. That will be, that's, that's the only thing that really concerns me is if we get the state money, we think we'll get about 10 or 11 million dollars, and that will help significantly. If we don't get the state assistance, then all the money that everybody thinks the TDC has will be gone, because we'll, we'll have to bond out and we'll, we'll have an obligation there going forward for, for a pretty significant time.
Okay, thank you.
And then that's the general process. And...
Did you have something?
There's another question.
You answered, okay.
Okay. The, and so we're, we're excited about that. If you get a chance and go down by Western Lake, we worked with Greaton Beach State Park. It's actually on their property. It's about two feet off the county right away on south side of 38, but it's a beautiful sign. This is our beta test on coastal Dune Lake signage to see if people actually stop and will read this and actually look at it, or if we're just putting up signs to put up signs. And subject to any questions, that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bagme.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items on the agenda. The first is a request to approve a bond council proposal and letter of agreement between Neighbors Gibling and the county for taxes, bond council. The necess, the necessity of needing a bond council is we're going to be financing the park across the bay. We're going to be basically refinancing a current indebtedness. When the county finances a capital project like this, the bank's going to structure the debt, most likely as a tax-exempt bond, when possible, because the interest rate is significantly lower when you do that. The original debt, apparently, that we're doing, that we're redoing was a bond financing, and so when we refinance it and add that 10 million, the current or the new amount will be 27 million, and that's where that number comes from. So I would ask you to approve the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you. At the request of Public Works, we are asking you to exercise, believe it or not, a sixth option to renew an agreement for professional services with ecological associates. It's for the Habitat Conservation Plan and Environmental Assessment.
I'll make that motion. I think they have done an outstanding job of, I believe Commissioner Infeld and I were in Washington and watched the presentation that they gave up there and doing a phenomenal job.
And I'll second, but I have a question. How does what we're doing here differ than what we did earlier with regards to ecological associates?
You approved renewing it. This is just approved in the actual contract. We two-stepped that process.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is that it? Okay. Commissioner Meadows, you have anything?
No.
Commissioner Commander?
No, sir.
Commissioner Infeld?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pridgen?
No, sir.
Bill Chapman, don't either. Okay, we have citizen requests. First one up is Adam Shalan. Did I pronounce that right? I probably butchered it, didn't I?
Boil.
Okay, you're Kevin. All right. State your name for the record, please, sir.
Kevin Boyle. Chairman, Commissioners, we're just here on behalf of Seaside for the annual July 4th parade, just requesting for the road closure. We have received all permission and support from Fire Marshal Sanchez, along with Sheriff Atkinson, and all of the needed private property owners in order to stage this traditional parade on 38.
Most approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Janice Reynolds.
Hello, my name is Janice Reynolds Hannah. Can my husband come up? I only have a short presentation. Can he come up and finish it for me, Hannah?
Yes, ma'am. Stay within the timeframe, please.
Okay. Good morning, County Commissioners. My name is Janice Reynolds Hannah. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this petition. I want to present to you an historical perspective on our road. I have lived on this road for more than 44 years. Most of us are long-term residents. In the early years, my first husband, Craig Reynolds, used to grade the road with a small tractor. Following that, another resident on Pioneer Drive maintained it until his death approximately two years ago. We have one spot especially needing a load fill affected by major rainfall periodically. We, we know if the county would take over our road, we would have assurance that it would be maintained very well. Thank you very much.
As he's coming up, let me look at Wilmer on, is this a county road?
No. All right, sir, come forward, state your name for record, please.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. It's good to be with you this morning. I appreciate all the matters that you have to deal with, a lot more significant than ours. There's a couple, three things I'd like to touch on with you folks. It's this, the residents on Pioneer Drive have maintained it for over 40 years with two tractors, and one of the points is of 40 years, it means everyone's getting so much older, and it's not like it was many years ago. And with that cost comes significant health costs that you have to deal with also. The part, I would, I ask you to remember one of the parts is that maintained it with just two tractors over the years. There is a part of that road, Pioneer Drive, where there is a low spot, and if I was to look at it as an engineer, I, I'm not an engineer, but I can back my previous life when I was chair of a public works department for a number of years, and I've looked at a lot of road problems myself. If I were to look at that, I could say, well, let's build this road right across, let's just build this all up. It's not necessary. We do have a little ponding area on the one side. We are in the process of contacting the company that owns that property to see if they can do something to alleviate that ponding. But the reality is, there's never been a time when we, folks couldn't get through. Over the years, the residents and homeowners of this road have really asked the county for nothing. All they're asking for now is a little help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you aware, Janice, I've known Janice probably most of her for 44 years, that you can do what's called a pay-for-grade and that you can pay the county $25 an hour and that they will come out and, and grade it for you, you know?
We have done that, yeah. We have done that a couple of times.
And usually it ends up the same people want to do it.
Yeah. We've done that a couple of times with having to come out. And the reality is that one spot should have a couple loads of fill. And the other part, and I just want to remind folks that most of the people on this road are elderly people, and some of them are dealing with significant health problems. Jim, Mr. Jim, who looked after the road, he died. Her son is there with her, staying with her, because her health isn't good. And point frankly, most of those residents are not in a great financial position on that road. It's not like it was a number of years ago. It's changed.
Mr. Johnson, can you get Public Works to look at this and...
Yes, ma'am. We'd be glad to, as you know, we've got...
Some criteria that we have to implement and utilize in accepting roads. We'd be glad to take a look at it, see if it meets that criteria for you, and bring you back a report.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Charles Mall. Please state your name for the record.
Charles Mall. I've been approached by some of the people that I know that use the park, and they asked me if I would consider selling my property to the park. I said, yes. So it's, now it's up to you people. That's it.
Very similar to last. As you know, we've got a, a, an ordinance that clearly lines out how we acquire property. We'd be glad to take a look at, further look at Mr. Mall's property, and if there's a reason that we should investigate it further, we'll be bringing it back to the board for your consideration.
Okay. All right, we'll be looking, have them staff look into it and come back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comments? Seeing none? We adjourn.